We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, Liberty and Justice for All."
Roll call, please.
Trustee here.
Present.
Here.
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 Trustee Dominia.
Here.
Here, Gergen.
Present. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February 9th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented.
Don't move.
Motion, Trustee Blue Thart.
Second.
Second, Trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Now, we have some acknowledgements in a roomful of people here tonight. First item on the acknowledgements is a commendation of Officer Ray Galliato. I hope I pronounced that correctly, and I believe Chief Gutshau is going to discuss this award.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to hijack the meeting tonight. I don't think I've seen this many people in a room at one time. So, as we all know, over the last few years, professional law enforcement is under a tremendous level of public scrutiny. We turn on the TV during any given news cycle and see stories of how a police officer somewhere at some time did something to discredit the profession, potentially dishonor the badge they will all wear proudly as a symbol of our commitment to service, to protect and serve our communities. Unfortunately, it's easy for the bad acts of a few to overshadow the countless positive and sometimes exceptional neuroic interactions police officers have with their communities every day. It is these positive acts that led the department to implement an awards program late last year. Mayor, you had the opportunity there at annual meeting to participate in the first time those awards were given out for past acts. It's my honor to come before you tonight for the first formalized presentation of these at a village board meeting. This program seeks to catch people doing something great with a goal of recognizing a member of our department when they go above and beyond by performing their duties in an exceptional way. It is one of these exceptional moments that brings us here tonight before you to recognize one of our own police officers for brave and selfless acts, an act performed only out of a desire of an officer striving to honor his oath to serve and protect his community, while at the same time showing true compassion and empathy to a fellow human being. It has been said that circumstances do not make a man, they reveal him. That is my distinct honor and privilege to publicly recognize one of our officers, the exceptional way they perform their duties. Now, I'd like to ask Officer Ray Galliato, please join me. On November 18th, shortly after 10 o'clock PM, our officers were dispatched to a traffic crash with injuries at the intersection of Route 173 and Durham Road. Officer Galliato was one of the first to arrive that evening, discovering one of the drivers pinned upside down on their vehicle, which had rolled over from what was later determined to be a head-on collision. Without hesitation or regard for his own safety, Officer Galliato entered the minivan through the rear hatch, climbing over and around blood-covered debris, broken glass, and the badly deformed passenger compartment. For over 30 minutes, Officer Galliato used his own body both to support the driver and to shield her from the breaking glass and the heavy equipment being used by the fire department to cut the vehicle apart. Despite the chaos of the scene, Officer Galliato remained focused on protecting and comforting the driver, who was experiencing severe pain because of her injuries. Officer Galliato never left the driver alone, remaining at her side until she was moved from the vehicle, a true reflection of the highest caliber of police officers our community is blessed to having. Officer Galliato's actions that evening embody what means to be a public servant. His actions are to be commended, therefore it is my honor to present Officer Galliato with the department's Commendation Award, which is awarded in circumstances where a police officer demonstrates outstanding performance of their duties under unusual, complicated, or hazardous conditions. Congratulations, Officer Galliato.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, Jeff. All right. Next item is the Oath of Office for new officer, Officer Peter Lesney. So, if Jeff would lead that, please.
As you know, it's our tradition in the Antioch to publicly welcome our new police officers and their families to our community as they take their oaths. Unfortunately, when our newest officers were hired, we were not able to fill this tradition because of the recent COVID surge. Now that things are seemingly slowing and returning to normal, we wanted to provide these officers the experience they missed out on. Tonight, I am pleased that you can join us as we give Officer Peter Lesney and his family a warm welcome. Although I showed Pete's bio at a previous board meeting, now that you've put a name to a face, I'd like to remind everyone that he joined our team in December, coming to us as a lateral transfer with nine years of policing experience with the Chicago Police Department. During his time with CPD, Pete served as a patrol officer for three years before spending time in specialized units, such as the Area North Saturation Unit, Task Force, and most recently the Auto Theft and Carjacking Task Force. Pete holds a bachelor's degree in Justice Studies from Northeastern Illinois and is fluent in Polish. Pete, would you like to join me with your wife?
Bring the whole family.
Yeah, why not?
Bring them all.
Careful, it's a Polish family. Careful what you ask.
That's actually funny.
Peter's decision to leave the Chicago Police Department was made for the desire to provide a better environment for his wife and children to join us here this evening. He chose the Antioch Police Department to continue his career after experiencing her community during his visits to his parents' summer home, which is located on the Channel Lakes. This evening, Peter is joined by his wife, Michelle, son Adrian, daughter Emily, his mother Maria and mother-in-law Eva, his father Andy and his father-in-law Ziggy, his brother Mark and sister-in-law Jen. And now I ask the clerk, remind the minister of the Oath of Office for Peter.
Good, good name.
I'm Peter Lesney.
Positions. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you and welcome. Next item is, again, Police Chief Gutshau. It's the Police Department promotion of Officer William West to Sergeant.
East to west, west to east.
At your meeting. I know. You'd almost think I like speaking.
Yeah.
So, just a few moments ago, I was honored to be part of the one of the most memorable things a police chief can be a part of, which is seeing new officers begin their careers in what I consider to be the greatest profession on earth. Now I come before you with something even more special, the promotion of one of our officers to Sergeant. It's enjoyable to see men and women start their careers with this extraordinary department. Promotion is a celebration of what become from devotion to professionalism, a lot of hard work, and by continually striving to grow and improve. It is proof that our community hires great people to serve as police officers. At this time, I would like to invite Officer William, we call him Bill, West and his lovely wife Brenda to step forward.
Yeah, kids can come up.
Everyone join? And I better get this right, a lot of pressure now. As I prepared for this evening, I tried to think of a special word or phrase that describes Bill. Although a lot of jokes about dropped wallets and having his first patrol vehicle to be hitched to a post in the olden days, as he calls them, came to mind. When I thought more broadly about Bill's career, the phrase "true grit" came to mind. In the world of psychology, grit is described as a positive, non-cognitive trait based on an individual's perseverance of effort combined with the passion for achieving a particular long-term goal. This perseverance of effort promotes the overcoming of obstacles and challenges that lie on the path to accomplishment and serves as a driving force to achievement realization. I do not think there's a better way to describe Bill, a man who has dedicated nearly 40 years of his life to public service and who has worked tirelessly throughout that time to earn the promotion he is achieving tonight. So, thank you, Bill, for your continued professionalism and your grit. Bill is a graduate of Antioch Community High School and holds a bachelor's degree in pastoral studies from North Central University in Minneapolis. He joined the US Army in 1979, honorably serving our country for six years. He began his law enforcement career within Lake County in 1988 as a corrections officer at the Lake County Jail. He was later hired as a police officer by the Lake Zurich Police Department in 1991, where he honorably served the people of Lake Zurich for more than 23 years. He retired from his first career and in 2015, joined the Antioch Police Department, fulfilling his desire to serve the community where he has raised his family. During the seven years with our department, Bill has served in several capacities, including being a member of the Major Crash Assistance Team, a Truck Enforcement Officer, a Juvenile Officer, and most recently, a Field Training Officer. Tonight, in addition to his wife Brenda, he's joined by his daughter Shannon, his daughter Stephanie and her husband Patrick, grandchildren Kaziah, Kevin, and Kalen, his son Dan and his wife Rachel. He's also joined by many former colleagues and friends. It is truly an honor and privilege to be part of Bill taking the significant big step forward in his career, and I would ask that clerk, remind now, and Mr. the Oath of Office.
You done speaking now, Jeff? Get a picture of that bed.
All right, thank you. Nobody leave yet for a second. Let's hear from the police, please.
Your honor, if I may hijack the meeting just a little bit longer.
Of course.
Just noticed other new officer, Amanda McCall hiding in the background there. She chose not to take an opportunity to do a public swearing-in. She just wanted to move on and get training, get on the streets, but I dear miss, we didn't recognize her and welcome her to the community. She's Amanda.
She's got to do the round.
All right, Jeff, stay up there for a second. So, still part of the mayoral announcements, I would just like to personally say a thank you to all of the police officers in Antioch who were involved as a department and as a community in the Tommy House search and eventual recovery of him. I think that, you know, Jeff and I believe Jim Moran and Officer Smith and Bonnerati really became an extended part of that family during the search. Antioch and the community and the police department stepped up when others maybe should and didn't. And I appreciate it. I'm sure the community appreciates it. The resources and time you guys gave to the family and that effort is beyond any commendation I can give you. So, I want to personally thank you guys for doing that. So, with that, again, I'd like to give you a round of applause, too. All right, class dismissed. You guys can go.
Hey, Bill? Can I be 31 at the table? Because I know you got 30 reserved.
Oh, and one more thing. Tonight, a local resident, Courtney Kowalski, is playing a police officer on Chicago Fire at 8 o'clock. So, tune in.
Better hurry up.
Does that go on that screen pretty much?
Hey, buddy, how you doing?
Hey, thank you. Seen you around for quite a while.
You know, I gotta call this supervisor. Who'd that be now? Oh, that's you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna be one of those monitors with the camera around. Thank you.
Yeah. It's my favorite. I can't help it. Me too.
What? What are you doing? What? You know, it's.
Oh, it's a good one.
That's another thing that's. I'm already, you know, I killed me on Ozarks. That's a great flick.
Yeah.
How do you find the time? There's some great flicks out there.
No one wants to see us.
Thank you.
I will say I've noticed, I will say I've noticed you're growing your hair back. The bald look isn't part of the job anymore.
Hey, buddy, look at this. I'm getting to be like you. Hey, be safe.
Keep on full beard.
We used to wear band medals.
Usually do one in the winter.
We'd do a life, we'd do a life save. We'd get something from the hospital. Steve and I wore band medals. Band medals, our band medals from high school. So, we took pictures and high school band medals with our life-saving stuff. And the hospital used to get so mad. You know, you think you're funny. Yeah, we do. Thank you. So, they hung in the hospital at Victory. And Steve wore the goofy glasses. Gathering glasses you get from a funeral. There's only one Steve. And I think he had more band medals than me. Guess he was Ken Smouse's kid.
All right. We will. We'll move on to the next item on the committee, the whole agenda, which is the citizens wishing to address the board. If there's anybody here that wishes to address the board, did you guys sign in by any chance? Just come put your name up here and then.
That's kind of cool.
Head right up to the microphone over here so we can hear you.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, that was such an amazing ceremony. It was awesome. Hi, everyone. My name is Sabrina Perrin. Hi. I'm so glad to be here to have the opportunity. I am the founder of Bridge, Bridge here in Lake County, where we're building relationships with different generations every day. Some of you may or may not have known, back in 2020, after the murder of George Floyd, my son was right here in your community, but did a peaceful and amazing, amazing demonstration. And from then, we knew that Bridge is a place where, you know, people wanted to be more racial reconciliation, and we knew the bridge was the right place for them. Seventy-one percent of this community support Bridge currently, and they're doing amazing things. And I'm just here to let you know that what we've done and what we're going to continue to do, we've done, we had amazing, amazing conversation around the racial issues in our country, private, wonderful conversation, a time for people just to express their hearts in a peaceful, private place, as well as we have the opportunity just to do a lot of things to help educate. They bring awareness around the area and also diversity and diverse, more diversity in this community. I just wanted to briefly let you know that we are going to be doing a Juneteenth celebration, the 18th and the 19th. It's going to be held in Lindenhurst. You guys are welcome to come. We're currently partnered with the Library of Lake Villa. We just went to, we just partnered up more with the Lindenhurst Police Department and Drink Water, which is going to be speaking for themselves. But I just wanted to let you guys know who we are. I am the founder, let you guys know that I will give you a card. And if you want, we could be found on our email address is bridgelakecounty@gmail.com. You can also find us on our website, bridgelakecounty2020. Dot com. I have a card for you as well. So, that's fantastic. But I just wanted to show you my face because here in this community, many of you may or may not have already known, but this was a very pivotal place for the Underground Railroad, where a lot of slaves was able to come and be here because of great people that lived in this community. And I just want to make sure that we continue on in the conversations that must be had, need to be had, and we, but to have a safe place. And one last thing, I want to let you know, we are trying to, many people have asked how you can help. We looking for volunteers. If you know of grant writers, if you know anyone that has a business that likes to donate resources to what we're doing and continue to support us in our great efforts, we're doing some amazing, amazing things. So, I thank you so very much. I'm not sure if I have three minutes, but I yield back my time if I'm under, which I doubt it. So, I just wanted, and may I approach you to give you a card?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. I thank you.
And on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Yeah, make a copy.
Thank you. Perrin.
All right, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Michelle Casey. I'm a resident of Lindenhurst. I've moved out to this area almost two years ago. I have a nonprofit that I started in Lindenhurst called Drink Water Family Services. And this is a response to the need of safe, a safe environment for children and families to come to fulfill court-mandated visitation and reunification. And so, I'm here as well just to bring awareness that we are in the area. We have families that utilize our services, that are residents of Antioch. I also serve as a board member on the Antioch School District 34. And so, I thought it would be a good idea to come here and just let you all know what we have going on in Lindenhurst in terms of family reunification, because we have a huge population within the area and within our school system, Antioch 34 School System. So, thank you for your time, and if you have any further questions, I can, my website is drinkwaterfs.org. You can find all my information on there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did she say drink water? FS.org.
And I went, ran ahead and wrote mine out. Hi, I'm Amanda Coletti. And I just wanted to, again, share these services that these wonderful friends have. And we were in the Lindenhurst Board Meeting last week, and I'm like, this is my hometown. We're coming here and letting you know, too. So, I grew up in Antioch, lived in Chicago for a little bit, and I'm now back in Antioch raising my family. My husband and I have fostered in both Lake County and Cook County and adopted three children. And then parenting any child, as you guys know, adopted or not, requires knowledge, humility, intuition, and growing wisdom and skill. Parenting a child who is adopted requires additional specific knowledge and intricacies of how adoption will inform a child's experience. Parenting a child who is adopted and being raised in a family with a different racial background is yet another unique and specialized reality that requires additional considerations to help ensure that a child will grow to be an adult who finds joy and meaning in their life. So, in seeking this for my family, I've had the opportunity to connect with Sabrina Perrin and her family, founders of Bridge Lake County, and Michelle Casey, founder of Drink Water Family Services. My family and I have had the privilege in joining Bridge for Juneteenth celebrations and other events for over the last two years, as well as author visits and workshops through Drink Water. All these events have just made an incredible needed impact on my kids. So, again, tonight, we're just here to make you aware of both Bridge by Sabrina Perrin and her family and Drink Water Family Services and the community and services it provides. As a foster and adopted parent, at times, life can feel very isolating. So, there are many layers added. If you know any other foster or adoptive families or families like mine, please feel free to share this community with them. So, we're just grateful. Thank you for your time this evening and.
All right, thank you, ladies, for your service and say hi to your mom and dad. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And you do not have to sit through the rest.
Yeah. I'll give you the exit. Yeah. Yeah. Uh-huh. Have a good night. Thank you again.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you. Anyone on Zoom wishing to address the board? No? Okay, thank you. All right, onto the regular business discussions. First is discussion of a liquor request from Antioch Fine Wine regarding a code amendment to Section 4-2B-10C, subsection four, related to expanded sampling. I believe Adam, as I see him, he's on Zoom. We did discuss this at one prior committee of the whole meeting, so I would like to open this for a discussion again. Mr. Kosch, the floor is yours.
Hello, everyone. We were here about a month ago to discuss this matter. And I believe at that time, one trustee was definitely against my request. One seemed to support my request, and the remainder wanted some time to think about it and investigate it. I did send a follow-up email, which I believe was forwarded to everybody, and hopefully they had a chance to read it. Certainly open to answering any questions about what I said. And I just did want to re-highlight that the request that I have is to strike Section 4-2B-10C4 of the code. This would only apply to one entity in the village. It would apply to us. As far as I know, we're the only entity that holds this license, and I don't really know of any others that are even eligible for the license. So, with that, any questions or any discussion?
Right. Trustee Pierce?
I'm good right now.
Okay, Trustee Masick?
Yeah, I'm fine with what he's, what he wants to do, so.
Trustee Peterson?
Yeah, I. I have been thinking about this a lot. And the only thing they sell is liquor. They don't, they don't sell gas. They don't sell other things. They're, you're going to go into their, their store, you're going to buy alcohol or soda. That puts them in a different category, and we can't lump everybody together because we don't want to give, we, we don't want to spread these pouring licenses all over and put gambling machines all over. This is a specific use. I understand what they're saying. I've been in there and had tastings. If I want to go in there and try a new bottle of wine, they'll let me taste it. They have a specific reason for wanting to do this, and I don't have a problem with it. I really don't. I've thought about it a lot. It's a hard decision, but I, I'm not going to lump him in with everybody else. They are the only ones, and I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you. Trustee Blue Thart?
I agree wholeheartedly with what you just said. It's, this, this is an opportunity to help a local business. It's been around for years. It's a 21 and over business, and these machines. That's a twenty-one and over business and these machines are. I'm sorry, everywhere. And you don't want, you know, you can go in any place and see them piggly wiggly, see them everywhere else. I think we should act quickly and if we need to amend the code or change whatever we need to do to allow them to have these. The ability to get these machines if need be, if we need to tighten the wording somehow so that it, the pouring wording or something that. Doesn't open it up for other uh establishments. I'm for that. But I I I don't see a problem with this. I think we should pursue it and and move forward.
All right, thank you trustee Berman.
Um, I think we should move forward. I think though, you know, they. A lot of the points that he brought up were very valid and um. They deserve. Yeah, that's all.
Thank trustee Domeniac. She's a, no, trustee, you're a mute, sorry.
I said it will be no surprise to anybody that I don't support this and for three basic reasons. First of all, public safety. We talk a lot. One of my colleagues talked a lot about public safety. Public safety in my mind is not just about physical safety, it's about mental health. And when I started AHA eleven years ago. One of the drivers for that was the fact that at the, one of the school staff members talked about children parenting their parents. Because they had addictions, whether it's from substance abuse or gaming. Um, I I did find the letter to be helpful to give me a better understanding of where the petitioner is coming from. But I would argue that um uh there's not necessarily that much of a greater acceptance of gaming. And that's a philosophical thing for me. If I talk to Bruce Johnson and I pass up and I hear the number of stories of the increasing number of people that. Are uh losing families and businesses and and livelihoods as a result of gaming. And Lake County has decided to take all their video gaming money and invest it in mental health and addiction services. I don't know if I could. Support the idea that gaming is acceptable. That's the first reason for me. The second. Reason is I think this is a slippery slope. Who's next? Uh, the argument that they're the only ones that qualify for this, what's to say that somebody else doesn't come in and say, well, gosh. It says I have to have a certain amount of square footage, but you know, could you change that so that it accommodates me? And I can think of one petitioner that came to us several years ago when we actually suggested that we could give him a pouring license. So you know, I just think if if we think that it's important to give people gaming because we want to be business friendly and support businesses. Then why don't we just give everybody a liquor license so that there's a. Equal playing field for every business in town because there are so many that are struggling and trying to get by. And will they all love to be able to have a liquor license so that they could have gaming and perhaps then enhance their revenue? Um, we also passed an ordinance, for those of you that are new to the board, we did pass an ordinance stating that we did not want this proliferated. And so we put in an ordinance that stated that in order to get a liquor license, you get to have a restaurant of a certain size, fully equipped kitchen. And while I understand that this is a request for a change in a specific ordinance. Um, I I still believe firmly that what we're trying to do here is not to. Continue to grow the number of gaming establishments in Antioch. And then lastly, I think about vision and what I perceive to be the vision for our community and and to suggest that more people are going to come to Antioch. Because they can go and game in um or gamble in a liquor store. I'm having a little bit of trouble um appreciating how that works. Um, but I think for me, uh, if I think about the municipalities that have voted in gaming versus the ones that have not. Um philosophically and what I believe the residents are looking for is less gaming. Um, rather than more. So you know, those are my reasons. Um, obviously, I'm in the minority, which is not surprising to me. But I can't support this for those reasons.
I will. Thank you very much. All right, yeah, so um one more time around for comments and then we'll move it to the next uh board meeting. So trustee Pierce?
Uh, no comment again.
I gotta comment, I gotta comment only because public safety was brought up. We don't regulate people's entertainment. When someone throws twenty bucks in, that's their entertainment instead of going to the movie. If you're, if if you're going to regulate gambling. And you got the feeling that that's a disease, then you gotta recuse yourself from every liquor license vote. Because that's a bigger disease. So I'm sorry, it doesn't, it it doesn't go on my washboard. So public safety with with, you're gonna say, you're gonna vote no on the theater for for their liquor license. Cause that would be a public safety around kids. There's nobody that goes in that liquor store. Adam will confirm this unless they're associated with an adult. I've never seen anybody in there under the age of twenty-one, pretty much ever, never. That's uh in the liquor store and I'm sure the machines are going to be tucked back in a location that's going to be whatever they're going to have. So i- it just doesn't make sense. If I want to throw twenty bucks, then that's my business. If I want to go see a grief counselor, I'll go see a grief counselor about it. And hopefully they'll do, they'll, they'll, they'll work with me, but it it just doesn't make sense. So I mean, public safety, you can't put public safety in in those machines in the same sentence. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you trustee Peterson.
I don't have any other comments.
Trustee Bluthart?
No other comments. Just would like to proceed forward.
Trustee Berman?
No other comments.
Trustee Domeniac?
I think that's good enough. Thank you.
All right, um, thank you. So I'll ask that this um be put on the next regular board meeting, which is, I keep saying March sixth, but I think it's actually March ninth. March ninth is the regular board meeting. So thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is discussion of a liquor request from Darney. Gas and food regarding a code amendment to section four dash two C dash fourteen C related to. Package sales limitations. And we do have, um, I believe I saw Mr. Darney on Zoom a moment ago. And as soon as he comes back, I'll give him the floor.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Thank you. And uh again, this is something that was discussed probably about the same timeframe a month ago. So uh, Mr. Darney, uh, floor is yours.
Oh, yes. Uh, I'm not able to see the camera over there on the, in the meeting. Is your camera on?
Can't see the boardroom anymore.
All right, uh, Jim is, uh, Jim Moran is working on it.
Okay, that's good now. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I I discussed in the past meeting too, like um if we can allow the the age limitation um from twenty-one to um eighteen. For the packaged liquor sale, so we can uh hire um people who are interested in actually working. Uh, and same thing, uh, so we is, we have a difficult, difficulty in hiring people and finding people. Uh, now with the COVID and so we want this age to be lowered to eighteen so that we can actually hire people who actually wants to work.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll ask trustees for comment. Trustee Pierce?
Um, on this issue, our staff did a very nice uh investigation with other communities. And I think it proves out that the serving age should remain twenty-one. I mean, the selling age should remain twenty-one. Um, I think there was only two communities that allowed a. That allowed um selling of alcohol by people under the age of twenty-one. There was a difference with people who were serving in a restaurant uh with food. So th- they did have differences there. So I I think, I I think we should just remain as is.
Okay, thank you trustee Maisick.
You know, I, I, I get the point um of the gas stations wanting it. You know, I, I get uh Mary's point. Last time it's been that way forty years and I respect that point. Um, technology has obviously increased on the driver's license with scan. And the, and the cameras over the registers, which wasn't there when, when this was all put in place. The biggest problem for these folks are. Everybody's driving to Wisconsin. To get their, say, forty cents a gallon for gas. They don't have the dough to hire, to pay someone over the age of twenty-one, what's needed for them to earn a living. So to pay them twenty-five bucks an hour to sit there to ring up liquor. They don't, I, I, you know, I don't know what these guys pay them, but I'm sure it's not twenty-five bucks an hour to make fifty grand. So that's, that's the quagmire these folks are in. They're paying them, they're probably paying just over, oh, barely making a living, minimum wage. So something's got to, so- something's got to budge here and it's probably going to happen with all communities because now the governor raised. Oh, municipalities can put their own tax on top of the state tax and top of the county tax. So something's got to budge. You gotta help these guys out.
Thank you trustee Peterson.
I, I have a hard time with this. Um, I, we did ask staff to investigate this. They came back with all these numbers and overwhelmingly. They came in at twenty-one years old. I, I understand what you're saying, trustee Maisick, but I, I, I just, I can't go with it. I I have to stay at twenty-one.
All right, thank you, uh trustee Bluthart.
This is one of those where I really don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. So I'm just gonna withhold further comment. If it came to a vote, I would give it a little more thought, but it's. We ask eighteen-year-olds to do a lot for our country and you can't let them, so.
Trustee Bluthart, could you speak into the microphone?
Yes. I'm just saying, we ask eighteen-year-olds to do quite a bit for our country. They can serve, they can do different things, but they can't have a beer or sell a six-pack. But I kind of have a philosophical difference on that, but I understand the issue regarding twenty-one-year-olds and and how it's that way everywhere else, but. I don't have a a strong feeling for it and and it's just kind of one of those that I could go either way.
Thank you trustee Berman.
I was pretty much going to say exactly what trustee Bluthart just said, um, you know, but you know, I, it's. I'm kind of torn on this one. I, you know. I just feel that, you know, an eighteen-year-old is considered an adult. Um, you know, like you said, they can be drafted. Um, there's a lot of other things that they're able to do, but then to not be able, you, you know, it just, it kind of seems backwards to me.
Thank you trustee Domeniac.
I have no comment.
Okay, so I think, um, oh trustee Pierce, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like my second bite at the apple since other people take it. Um. Trustee Berman and trustee uh Booth Hart bring up serving your country at eighteen years old. I served my country at eighteen years old and I wasn't allowed to drink real beer. I had to drink three-two beer unless we were overseas. So there were restrictions in place for eighteen-year-olds back then and there, there's still restrictions in place for eighteen-year-olds today. So yes, we know that eighteen-year-olds are doing a lot and they are serving their country, but they still have rules to follow. And there's a maturity level that that is in place. Um, when I was eighteen years old, I I can promise you I was not as mature as I am. At the age of twenty-one and even now. So even though there's technology in place. Do you really want to put an eighteen-year-old in a position where they have a a a crowd coming in saying, you've got to give me the beer I want or the alcohol I want? It's, you're, you're putting somebody who may not have the maturity, even though they're legally an adult, in a position they don't need to be in.
Thank you.
Back to me.
Trustee, yeah, we're going around, we're going around the horn.
It, it's no different at a restaurant. You can't regulate stupidity, okay? People are going to be stupid. A twenty-two-year-old is going to serve to a seven, they could give booze to their under-eight seventeen-year-old, eighteen-year-old friend. There's just no way that, that's why you've got security cameras. That's why you get scanned. It's a seven hundred and fifty-dollar fine to that person if they screw up. If I'm correct on the fine, seven hundred and fifty bucks and they're in a lot of trouble. They, they do that. So I mean, the fine structure is there for the kid. It's, it's, if, if they're, if, if at a tavern, they underserve a minor, that's a huge ticket for the bar owners. They can't back them up. They're paying the ticket. So plain and simple as that. So they got to under- understand that the police are going to get involved. Everybody's going to get involved. It's a crime. So crime's a crime when you sell, sell it and they, they, I mean, you should understand. And, and you carry a gun. I mean, but to your point, you carry a gun. I mean, there's responsible, again, you can't drink, but you can't drink at eighteen years old. That does, when you're serving, serving at one of the restaurants, you can't drink, but you can serve them. Doesn't mean. So I mean. People, y- y- you want to figure a way to give gas stations more money? We're not going to give them gambling license. We're not going to help these gas stations out. No one's going to work, you're not going to have guys that adults going to work there for fifteen bucks an hour, plain and simple. So. I'm saying, I'm on, I'm on to put it maybe on a trial basis. But you got to help these gas stations out. You can't keep slamming them. Electric cars are coming. Chevy can't, is coming out with new trucks. We're not going to have a gas station left in Antioch.
Thank you trustee Peterson.
Yeah, um, you. My colleagues have brought up really good points and um I'm going to change my mind on it.
Trustee.
Support him.
Trustee Bluthart?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, trustee Pierce, it's not a matter of changing the drinking age to eighteen. And uh, I know that I just missed the cutoff up in Wisconsin when they changed it to eighteen, so I never was able to drink at eighteen up in Wisconsin, but. Um, but anyways, I think it just, there's a lot of eighteen-year-olds out there that are very trustworthy. And that I would trust more than a lot of adults I know. Um, but I think the bottom line is the rest, or they're not the rest, but in this establishment, be a gas station would be on the hook. The owners are on the hook for these people. There's fines in place if we need to, if we were to do this under a trial basis or or something to see how it went. I'd be all for that. Um, if we increased fines and these owners could lose their licenses to sell. Alcohol totally if these people, these eighteen-year-olds were caught selling, I'd be all for that. But I think um. Uh, it's like I said, I I'm, I know fifty-fifty, but I lean towards where our quality eighteen-year-olds should be able to. We're not asking them to, to sell open liquor, something that's going to be drunk right there. This isn't a restaurant or a bar. They're selling packaged goods. And I, I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you trustee Berman.
I don't have any other.
Trustee Domeniac?
I have no comment.
All right, I will um ask.
Can I respond to trustee Bluthart's answer in my name?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Um, it's, it's not a question whether it's legal to sell or drink alcohol. It's a question of maturity. A twenty-one-year-old is more mature than an eighteen-year-old. And if we're talking about twenty-one-year-olds versus eighteen-year-olds in bars and restaurants who are serving in a bar and a restaurant. There is an adult supervised. There is somebody over twenty-one there supervised. They go to a jewel. There is somebody over twenty-one who's supervising when they pass it across the, the thing. In this case, we're talking about potentially having an eighteen-year-old there being paid less than what somebody who's over twenty-one doing the equal work for. And so if you want to have an eighteen-year-old there doing the same work, they need to be paid the same as a twenty-one-year-old. But you're putting them in a position where it's not fair to them. So somebody can save some dollars.
All right, so I'm gonna um ask that this go to the uh next meeting on the agenda. We'll have some discussion again. If it's, you know, a motion in a second, but uh, thank you, Mr. Darney for um coming on tonight. And uh, we'll see you on, on March ninth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, any other business for the committee of the whole meeting? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn. So move motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
I, yes.
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 Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Meeting will adjourn until um, on my iPad, seven eighteen will adjourn until seven twenty-five and reconvene for the regular meeting. Like calling the meeting to order at seven twenty-five, uh, roll call please.
Present. Here.
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 Present. Um, no mayor report. Any citizens wishing to address the board on Zoom? Um, if there is somebody that raised their hand, we will uh, Jim Moran will interrupt me. Uh, we have one item on the consent agenda, which is the approval of the February ninth, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes as presented. I entertain a motion in seconds. So move. Motion trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
I, yes.
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 Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Um, first item on the regular business agenda, agenda is the consideration and approval of payments. Of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second. Second trustee. Second, Trustee Blueheart. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one, adding one more Class C retail package liquor license and one Class A and Class C tobacco license for Payall LLC DBA Shop and Save to be located at five seventy-nine West Illinois Route one seventy-three to ref- to reflect a change in corporate ownership and prorating fees. This is ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-two dash twelve. I entertain a motion, second, waiving the second reading. Motion, Trustee Peterson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Trustee Pierce. Um, I do have Mr. Patel attending via Zoom, I believe. I don't know if he's there. Um, I believe this again is just a change in ownership, uh, not a new license being issued. So any discussion in that regard, trustees? Alright, if not, roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Um, next item on the agenda is consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck in your business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration and approval of a resolution accepting and approving the downtown beautification plan for the village of Antioch as prepared by the Lakota Group, resolution number twenty-two dash twelve. Um, I believe Mr. Clark is, um, available via Zoom and Administrator Kime is here at the dice.
Thank you, Your Honor. So as a follow-up, um, you received a draft copy.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, move.
Entertained a mo- oh, um, um, motion trustee, trustee Blueheart, second trustee Peterson. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, as a follow-up to the discussion at the committee that whole last time, you all received a copy of the, uh, beautification plan, uh, that the village commissioned. I think it was about this time last year. You know, there, there was a little bit of conversation about it, but I didn't really receive a whole lot of feedback. Uh, I personally feel the plan is in good shape. It's what, what we were hoping to see, although we certainly are not in a position to fund all of those projects. You know, we are in a position to fund some of those projects, I think. And I'm working, I'm currently working to, um, incorporate what's in that plan into our capital plans. And I hope at the next meeting on the ninth, be in a position to present capital plans to you so you can see more information on where funds are coming from, support which projects, and how we plan to time some of this stuff, how long these things will take. I may not be right on some of it because some of it is, is guesswork at this point, but I, I'm gonna give it my best shot. So you have a much better, better indication than you have today. Uh, but tonight, all we're looking for is to accept, um, that, that report. Uh, Kevin is, is with us via Zoom. If you have questions about the report, um, but it'd be nice to put an end cap on that project and.
And, um, I would just like to say again, um, I appreciate all the work that went into this. I, uh, just want to make sure that as a, as a board and as a village, that this is just not a, a study that was done and goes on the shelf, which I think is, you know, what we're indicating here. We're gonna put some real pen-to-paper numbers, timelines, whether it's, you know, building out the one-year, five-year, twenty-year, thirty-year plan on this. Um, I think that's important and I think, um, as a board, we just got to keep that top of mind to do that over the next six months or whatever it takes to put that in place. Alright, with that, um, uh, discussion, anything, trustee Pierce?
Um, my question, I guess, for tonight, are we accepting every item in this report or are we accepting the report into the record? What is, why exactly are, we've got the report, why exactly are we voting yes on it tonight, I guess would be my question.
My answer to that would be just to conclude the project and to turn it from a draft and final and say, you know, you, it, this report was prepared for you. It's your report. You've had input into it. If you felt strongly, I don't, I don't want to see this and shall area included or, or something like that. If, if something emerged from this board that said, I, I, I would like this report to, you know, it, it, it's your report. You paid for it. We, you pay consultants in your staff to prepare it for you. But ultimately, it's your report. And, and I think the answer to that is, you know, if it's agreed upon that this is, the final version of the report, if you agree with what's in it, then it's easier to move forward without dissension later and somebody saying, well, that was only a draft or I never agreed with it. You know, it's easier for staff to move on something when we have a resolution behind it saying, you know, if somebody asks me five years or ten years down the line, why are you doing that? I'm gonna pull out a resolution from, you know, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two and say, this is why, because this was resolved to carry out.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Trustee Mason.
The right, the only, the only thing I got asked in, in, in it, because I, I didn't see it, because maybe, maybe I just did my research. But this is all changeable. So the, the board, ten years down the road, whoever that shall be, can sit there and say, you know, we don't like this parking lot. We don't like this. We can change it any fashion. This is just, let's call it an outline.
Yes, I agree with that.
So is there any, is there any wording needed that says this is an outline changeable to the future?
I, I think it's implied this board's prerogative at any point in time. You could change it next week. You could change it, you know, down the line some, you know, it may be that, you know, our finances change for the better and you want to add to this report and, and expand areas, you know, you, you could continue to do that. So this, this just serves as kind of a jumping off point for the, 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 the core downtown environment and what it could become. And you have some idea now what, what that may entail, what it may look like and what it may cost, but.
Just that someone came in here after the fact, ten years from today, said, no, this is what this was, this has to be this way.
No, because.
And they, they, they interpret it wrong.
A- a- and you now know that. Each of these projects are gonna have to move to a design phase. So even on, on the property across the street kitty corner to us, you know, we have a concept. Now it's moving into design. It may end up dif- different than what's shown. It, it, and it for sure will. It's some, in some respect.
Here's, here's, here's even a better, better question than this would probably be for, well, I guess two days. So answer to get it constituents, because you know, once you put something out there, there's gonna be fifty people, fifty percent people and say, man, I love it. Fifty percent going, that's stupid. So when we sell this, when this goes out, when he puts, when he puts it out and, 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 and just use to make sure that's put out there. And this is just a concept draft, what that was approved and, you know, changes will be made.
Yeah, and that sentiment.
Does that make sense?
Yes, and, and we did, you will see a connections article related to, the, the project that we're working on across the street at Depot and Main. And that, we, we use that wording, you know, directly, almost exactly what you said. You know, we showed a picture and say, this is a rendering, a conceptual rendering. Some elements may be included, some may not. It's all gonna be based on constructability, fundability. You know, I, I think we can fund.
Because it's almost got like most posts up. You gotta say, hey, how much of the audience is gonna say, I hate you because of that post? And how many people are gonna like it because of that post?
Well, if you get fifty-one percent.
Alright, why don't post up?
Good question.
Alright, thank you, Trustee Peterson.
I think it's time we move forward with this. I'm, I'm excited about it and, and this is the next step. So let's take this step and go to the design phase and move forward.
Alright, thank you, Trustee Blueheart. No comments. Thank you, Trustee, um, Berman.
No comment.
Thank you, Trustee Domeniac.
Um, I'm not quite sure what we're voting on, so I'm gonna vote no. Um, we had this presentation, but we never discussed it. So that's my comment.
Alright, thank you, um, Trustee Pierce.
I just want to say the generics of this, I like. There's specific things in here, as you say, with costs, funding availability, design changes. You know, if the world goes a heck in a handbasket tomorrow with Russia and Ukraine and the economy doesn't give us any money for twenty years, things are gonna happen in here, but the generics I like. So I'm probably gonna vote yes on this. I just want to answer one thing Trustee Mason said, uh, because I think it's very, a, a very astute point on his part. Any vote the board makes at this point can be overturned by a future vote, by a future, by this board or by a future board. Whether it's considered a good vote or bad vote, it can be overturned.
I understand how things work.
Yep, I just wanted to make.
I just wanna, I understand how things work. Thanks, thanks for the education.
I wasn't educating just you.
Alright, thank you, um, Trustee Peterson.
I have no comments.
Any comments on this side of the, oh, okay, anything else, trustee, um, Domeniac, before I ask for a roll call? Alright, um, roll call, please.
I'll vote yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Five voting yes and one voting no, motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution supporting the efforts without a timeline of the Canadian National Railroad to improve the North Central Service Corridor with the installation of double-track rails, track rail infrastructure to enhance emergency response and reduce vehicle traffic delays in the corridor. Resolution number twenty-two dash thirteen. I'd entertain a motion in a second. Motion, trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second, trustee Blueheart. Administrator Kime.
For background, um, administrator in Grace Lake, Mike Ellis, forwarded a resolution and asked for our support and he's, he's doing that to communities on the Canadian National Line. He's experienced and I've met with him before and some of us, um, managers get together and, and talk about things like railroads and what they do to our towns and how it impacts public safety. Um, so he asked that we support his, um, efforts to get Canadian National to expand capacity with a specific, um, goal to be able to get trains that need to stop for whatever reason. Some of the reasons are dead crews that can't continue because of timeframes. They've been in the train too long. Um, and we've experienced this in Antioch. They experience it all the way down the line where trains will, you know, bisect the community and gnarl traffic. You know, for hours upon hours. Um, so the conversation has gotten to Canadian National. They've offered to look into expanding double track farther south to give more capacity to the line in hopes of alleviating some of those, um, congestion points. And he asked the village of Antioch to consider this resolution in support of that effort.
Thank you. Um, any discussion, trustee Pierce?
So this would just be a supportive resolution for another community. It's not gonna do anything to improve traffic flow in Antioch. The Antioch Strangler will remain the same.
I, I can't tell you exactly what's gonna happen, but I think capacity down line is gonna impact many communities on, on this rail line, on this CN line. Um, a train that has a safe place to stop in, let's say, a, a, a southern area, you know, doesn't, won't need to stop here and, and block Antioch intersections.
And we have the same issue just over the border. So I think that, uh, at least the double tracking, the trains won't have to slow to let one pass to, you know, slow their speed and, and time that out. I think that's kind of the goal of it too.
Yep.
Trustee, uh, Mason.
The only concern is they may, because of this, they may throw more trains through. So you give them that, doesn't, it, I don't know if this dresses the, this still doesn't address the concern that, that the, the fire department has by the subdivision by Build One Department. Because that's a block. If the train stops there, that's a block subdivision. That's a life safety issue. So they haven't figured that one out yet.
Thank you, trustee Peters.
When I was on the board before, we only had single track. And we allowed them to put the double track in because they told us that the trains weren't gonna be as long because they were gonna have double tracks. And the trains got longer and there were more trains. So this really doesn't mean anything to me. Because they lied to us before. Um, and I saw on the news today that the Canadian National Railroad wants to merge with Kansas City Line. And that there are communities to the south of us that are suing to stop that merger because they're afraid. They know that the trains are gonna be two miles long and it's gonna snarl them, those communities. And so I'm really nervous about saying yes to this. I really am. I don't trust them. They lied to us before.
Thank you, um, trustee Blueheart.
Just to clarify, we're, we're being requested by our neighboring community, not the Canadian National for support on this, correct?
Correct.
That's all.
Thank you, uh, trustee Berman.
Hearing what trustee Peterson was saying, um, you know, uh, yeah, if there's been issues in the past, um, it's gonna be very hard to support something like that.
Alright, thank you, trustee, uh, Domeniac.
I have no comment.
Okay. Yeah, of course, go around ones. Trustee Pierce?
Um, I tend to agree with trustee, uh, Peterson. Um, Canadian, when it was the old railroad, I even forget what it was, but the Canadian National took it over and we double tracked. It became a nightmare here. If we were to vote yes on this, I would at least ask we hold it off and get something in here for Antioch. All we're doing is helping somewhere else and they're gonna increase their traffic flow and they're gonna screw our residents. I, I, I can't vote yes on this.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
Obviously, this is, this is, Grace Lake asks to be a good neighbor.
Yes, this is a request from Grace Lake.
This is a request from, Round Lake doesn't have the issue because they got the, uh, two, two, uh, bridges. Somehow they got lucky. So, well, nothing's gonna, they got no plan for infrastructure from Canadian Ri- the railroad to put the double tracks, no funding.
I, I don't, I honestly, other than what it says in this resolution, you know, I, I think this is a very prelimi- if that trouble, double track were to materialize, I think we're at a very preliminary.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, I don't even know why we, we have to even, if we, my concern is if we move on it and we want something in the future from the railroad, we're gonna look like, we're gonna look like, you know, maybe possible bad guy. That makes sense that we were voting against the railroad, then we want to have something for the railroad. Well, you guys voted against it. We get something on record that. So maybe we're better off just not doing anything. And just a wait-and-see attitude.
Possibility.
Instead of taking action, because we don't need to take action. There's nothing to take action on. That would be my opinion. Why, why take action when we don't need to take action? Why is Grace Lake taking such a proactive action? We don't want to, we don't want to aggravate the railroad. We may need their help in something else down the road.
My understanding is the railroad is in support of increasing their, increasing their track capacity.
They're in support or not in support?
In support. That's my understanding.
Key word that you used at the end where there was track capacity.
And that's what it does. This is definitely a, at a lane. This is, uh, this definitely increases capacity. I, I don't see it any other way.
And even if, if we say yes or no, they're gonna do it anyways.
It's possible it happens anyway. That's, that's absolutely right.
Trustee Peterson?
I don't have anything further.
Trustee Blueheart?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at this a little differently than others. I think I'm looking at it more from a neighboring community asking for support of their endeavor here and understand that delaying it or, or not supporting this, you're not doing anything, if the village of Antioch probably will not impact this program one way or the other. But I would just, uh, just say it's, 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 when, when our neighbors ask us for something like this, just something to offer support for a project they're, they're working on. It would be nice if we could support them in their endeavors, especially something like this that eventually it would impact us potentially, but I, I see this as a, doing them a favor, but if we need to delay it, I don't have a problem with that either.
Trustee Berman?
I don't have any other comments.
Trustee. Trustee Dominiac.
No comment.
I have a lawyer, a question from the lawyer here. Since we have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any way at this point to not take action on this and remove this from an actionable vote?
I can pull my second.
You can either have us pull our 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 motions or you can ask for a subordinate motion, which would be to table the.
Yes.
Table the motion, or you can have a vote and see how it falls and then bring it back if you have no prejudice on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's right. I am. You'd have to, you'd have to entertain a subordinate motion and and then. Such as a motion to postpone and and then. To deal with this.
All right, thank you. So are there any other motions that want to be entertained?
We're gonna have to see if they'll pull the motion, who made the motion.
Trustee Pierce.
We just have a motion to table?
Yeah, we have a s- a subsequent motion to postpone this matter for, for further investigation. Have a a motion in that regard. Am I allowed to make that motion after seconding the initial move?
I'll make a motion to table this, uh, so that we can examine this a little further.
Yeah.
All right, motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Hi. Yes.
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 Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries. All right, so next item on the agenda is consideration. And approval of an ordinance formally adopting the zoning map effective March first, twenty twenty-two. For the village of Antioch ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-two dash thirteen, I'd entertain a motion and a second waving the second reading.
So moved.
Motion trustee Pierce.
I'll second.
Second trustee Peterson. Discussion, please. Anything to discuss trustee Pierce? Trustee Maisick? Trustee Peterson?
No.
Trustee Bluthart?
No.
Trustee Berman?
No.
Trustee Dominiac?
No comment.
All right, roll call, please.
Hi. Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting M one zoning. To the Antioch Community High School for approximately eleven acres, PZB hearing twenty-one dash oh-nine. And our ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-two dash fourteen, that entertaining motion and a second waving the second reading.
So moved waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee. Second trustee Peterson, Mr. Garrigan, please.
Yes, thank you, your honor. This matter is coming for you for a request for Antioch High School for rezoning. There's approximately eleven acres currently in the area of the athletic fields for, which has been for some reason zoned for many, many years. As our one completely isolated, it's surrounded by M one zoning. So high school has requested to really clean up the map. Also, they are requesting M one zoning, which again is consistent with the surrounding zoning classifications. Around the Antioch athletic fields. And the second point is the applicant seeking approval of a. A new maintenance building. If you recall, there are two sheds that have been there for many years, just north of. Athletic fields. They're requesting the removal of those sheds. And to replace those sheds with a new twenty-eight hundred square foot CMU block maintenance building, which I think you have. Actually copies of the proposal in your packet. There'll also be some engineering improvements, a new pump station. Uh, some relocation of some utilities. The applicant, just for the record, they are requesting pursuant to our policy. A waiver of the building fees, so there'll be approximately fifty thousand dollars in building fees as part of the engineering improvements and. A over one million dollar proposed new maintenance building. So consistent with our policy. Uh, which we're seeking to incorporate in this emotion, they're seeking a waiver of building fees, approval of the site plan for the new maintenance shed. And to rezone this property to M one zoning. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, trustee Pierce.
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Maisick.
Yeah, I know we discussed building or the fees. But there's, you know, the village isn't the only people that go to that school. You've got other communities, township. Part of Lake Villa goes, Leonard's goes to that school. So I don't know if I'm too keen about that. That's a taxing body and those people are using it. That's just a thought to to take in consideration. I know we we do that. That's a lot of dope.
Excuse me. Thank you, trustee Peterson.
I believe that Lake Villa and Leonard's go to Lakes now, don't they? But I don't have a problem with the fees for another taxing body.
Thank you, trustee Bluthart.
Only question, just to clarify, when we had that discussion in the past, any out of pocket, they're still on the hook board, correct?
Correct. Any, any pass through fees as regards to consult consultants?
No problem. Thank you.
Trustee Berman.
I don't have any comment.
Trustee Dominiac.
I'm fine with this.
All right, any other trustees, Pierce?
Can we just be clear on what the motion was in waving the second? Because there's, there's a couple items on here. One is the. One is the changing the zoning to M one and then the next one is approving the. Site maintenance, the site plan and now they're asking to waive fees on top of that.
So I think we got a little ahead of ourselves on that item. I think this is just strictly what's on the table right now. Is the rezoning it from to M one, nothing to do with the fees or the. All right, roll call, please.
No.
Where I mean rezoning?
On the rezoning.
Yes. For rezoning, yes.
I said no.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, five voting yes, one voting no, motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration and approval. Of a resolution approving the site plan for maintenance building at the Antioch Community High School. This is resolution number twenty-two dash fourteen. I'd entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan minus waving fees.
All right, uh, motion trustee Pierce, approving, motion trustee Pierce, so I have a second.
Minus waiving the fees?
Correct. Second trustee Maisick. All right, discussion trustee Pierce.
No discussion, your honor.
Trustee Maisick.
Discussion was just other communities, so. Won't pass with the others, but. Ends up being like the library, so other folks use it. Why burden the, uh, the village with the other communities?
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
So let me get this straight. If we approve this. They don't, we're not waiving their fees then.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I have.
Trustee Bluthart.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Not understanding the, why we're not waiving the fees. So basically, that's, that's what we're discussing right now. I'm in favor of this building. It cleans this area up. And I like the idea of it and since we're covering all our out of pockets. I'll stay consistent on that and say that I would be in favor of waiving the fees, so. Looks like I'll be a no on this motion because of not waiving the fees.
All right, thank you, trustee Berman.
I'm sorry, I've, it, just sort of going back and forth. I'm like, I'm getting confused on this one. Um, okay, so you said that if. If we vote yes, then that means that we are or we are not, we are not.
We are not waiving the fees. They would have the approval for the buildings and and the project, but they would have to pay the permit fees to the village.
And then, can I?
Of course.
Is that okay?
Jim or Mike, yeah.
Um, or yeah, either one, I'm sorry. Um, is this one of those cases where it's you're. Robbing Peter to pay Paul, like as far as. Or is this different? I'm I'm not.
Well. The, the taxpayers of. The school district are in a much larger area, okay? So all of the taxpayers. You know, this goes from Grayslake, you know, to to Wilmot Road. Past crop, almost to the tollways, how big this district is. So that that would benefit. As I think trustee Maisick has pointed out, all the taxpayers in a very large area that wouldn't have to pay the fifty thousand dollars in permit fees. So I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but. It's not, it's not like this is contained to the same pockets that Peter or Paul may be wearing. You know, if this were contained to only Antioch residents, you know, it, that would be the case.
Okay.
Where you'd be taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other.
Yeah.
But. We gotta consider the size and the geometry of this district. It's well beyond Antioch township limits.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go to trustee Dominiac and then I'll take one more. Comment from the trustees and we'll call a vote. So trustee Dominiac.
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing what people are saying, so I guess the gist of this is whether or not we're gonna waive the fees. If indeed, to your point administrator kind, that we're looking at a larger area than library, which is kind of the analogy for this. Maybe we should consider a discount on the fees. So rather than waiving them entirely, we could say, well, reduce them by fifty percent. Uh, or whatever the percentage is that would be out of the pockets of the taxpayers here in Antioch. Is that an option? Could that be an option that?
He's nodding his head yes.
So I don't know if we vote on this particular motion and vote it. Down and then turn around and do another motion that says we're gonna reduce them or amend this motion. I'll leave that to you all, because I'm having a really hard time hearing people.
Okay. Trustee Peterson, do you have your hand up?
I did.
Yes.
Um, to to trustee Maisick's point, I have to agree with him that. I forgot that Lakes and Antioch are one school district. So yeah, it does encompass the entire. Community and I'll, I'll agree with not waiving the fees.
And this is one, this is, the fees are put in perspective as one police car. So if you think of it's one police car, the fees would pay for it.
All right, I am going to. Do a roll call on the pending motion to approve the resolution, uh, striking the provision waiving the fees. From.
So yes, vote, we're not waiving fees.
Well, yeah, a yes vote, we're not waiving fees. So roll call, please.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Four voting yes, two voting no, uh, motion carries. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is, let me find where I was here. Um, number nine, last item, consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the village administrator to sell savage or salvage. Or otherwise dispose of equipment. Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh-two dash fifteen, entertaining motion and a second. Waving the second reading.
So.
Second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce. Um, I don't know if there's any. Uh, discussion on this or presentation, otherwise I'll entertain a roll call on this item.
Hi. Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
All right, six voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Administrators report, no reports. Village clerk report, no reports. Any trustee reports, trustee Pierce?
Mine will be short tonight because the police chief picked up most of the night. I just want to put in the record on this weekend, uh, my grand, first granddaughter, Palmer or Lorelei was born. So I'm very proud to have her as part of this family. I wanted her in the record.
Congratulations. Um, any other trustees wishing to speak?
Just one, when you see one of the guys pulling a stone, give him a wave because they're busting her home.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
And I would like to announce that my fourth grandson was born. His name is River James and I'd like him entered into the record, River James Turner. It's my son Matthew's first baby.
Congratulations. Trustee, or any trustee, trustee Bluthart?
You think happy to announce that you and my daughters have any. I want to keep that going.
Yes.
Few more years.
Trustee Berman?
I don't have anything.
Trustee Dominiac?
Um, yeah, I just have one thing. You know, I was thinking about our last meeting and some of the comments that I made and I just wanted to bring this back up again, you know, and I have. Invite people to my home. I clean it up, even if that means shoving everything into a room and shut the door or putting it in the closet or under the bed. Um, March fourth and fifth, we have the vintage shop hop downtown and I think it would be really spectacular if. Someone could clean up the streets. I went to Something Sweet on, on Valentine's Day to get candy and walking down. Main Street to my car. Um, I went past one of our establishments that was basically littered with cigarette butts. So I'm hoping that we could, you know, shove everything in the closet for that weekend so that when we're inviting all these people to come in. To visit Antioch, we'll have our best foot forward. That's all I have.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I think as we ask people to come and shop and dine in a walking area, we need to really be thoughtful of that. All right, um, anything else, any other business anyone wants to raise? There's no, I have no reason to go into executive session. So if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Bluthart, roll call, please.
Hi. Yes.
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 Yeah.
Six voting yes, motion carries, meetings adjourn at eight oh four.